All right. This is Chairman Mike McCoo of the Town of Wellington Board of Finance calling to order a combined regular and budget meeting of February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven oh five P M. Jeffrey is absent tonight. He got in touch with me, so I'll entertain a motion to see Jim in Jeff's place.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Those in favor?
I.
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 I. Motion passes unanimously. Kelsey, are you ready to call roll calls once we're moving here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just kind of jumped on that one. For approval of minutes, I have not had time to go back through and review. We have a couple of meetings worth of minutes, and I have to make sure that they've been posted to the town, and I didn't have time to check that. So I'd like to move that we table approval of the minutes to the next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Kelsey, can you call the vote?
Christina?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Present to speak. Participation is desired and encouraged. Speakers will be limited in appropriateness of comments to maintain progress, stay on topic, and maintain decorum. Is there anyone present tonight who would like to speak? All right, let's move on to old business. Update and financial reports. The members of the board have all received reports that Donna had sent out. And if I am quick enough, I'm going to get them on screen. If there are any comments or discussion, you can feel free. I'm doing that. Okay, here we go. This is the January financial report. Upper section is obviously our revenue. This is across the whole town budget. Donna has already indicated that she sees nothing of concern in where we are currently halfway through our budget year. Any questions or comments?
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering how we're doing with the snow budget this year, or if that, this is the right place to even ask that, but I think so, since it's actuals.
Well, I can say that public works overall, we can see here in about the fourth line down in expenditures, public works is under forty percent expended for the year. But I don't know, that budget is a big complicated budget, so I wouldn't know what the snow budget is within it. I don't know if Erica has anything she can add to that, or Donna?
I have to look it up. And then I can report to you where the budget stands to the actual to date. I'll send that out tomorrow morning.
Okay. Well, I'm guessing, I'm guessing if it's you all would know if it was running out and if it seems like it's a decent winter, but you know, I know that's kind of deceiving sometimes because it's not necessarily how much snow falls, it's how many times they have to go out and how much material they have to use. So, but if there's no concern, then that's good.
Erica, do you have anything you want to comment on that?
No, I apologize. I don't have access to that here, so I can't look at those numbers. But there wasn't prior to this last storm, and I haven't seen all of the final numbers after this past weekend, so we'll keep you up to date. We'll be talking about it at the selectmen's meeting on Monday.
All right, thank you. Any other board questions or comments on this January financial report before I bring up the other one? All right, while I'm getting that, Erica, you don't have any concerns about collection, right? The last time we talked about collection, we were on track for the ninety-nine percent, correct?
We were, and since you give me one second. Since that last to pull my emails up, we were close. I believe we were over ninety-eight percent as of this week, but give me one moment, Mike.
Okay, I'm bringing up the other fund balance report.
Like, what do we budget on that ninety-eight percent collection?
We budgeted ninety-nine in this current year. We had gone, yeah, we went to ninety-eight last year because we were concerned about the effect of the pandemic, but we still came in over ninety-nine anyway on collection.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, so you're looking at
As, yeah, as of last Thursday, as of last Thursday, the tenth, Janice reported to me, she was at ninety-eight point one five.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. This is a fund balance report. This came out of a discussion at the last meeting. There were some numbers floating at the bottom of some of the budgets we were looking at, the budget requests, and Donna wanted to make sure they were all up to date. And this, so this is a summary right here. And Donna, if you could just explain the numbers that we saw, like on the bottom of the fire department budgets that said fund balance, were did you determine what those were comprised of, or are they floating numbers that actually needed to be updated, or what was the story with those?
So the fire department, the, at the end of the year, I believe the numbers on the spreadsheet were accurate. The year to date is a moving target.
Okay.
Because the year isn't over, and there's going to be more expenditures. That's going to draw down the fund balance.
Okay, so the fund balance is indicating, like, for example, here, Department eighteen Emergency Services, Wellington Fire Department shows two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. As I, you know, that's money left over from a previous year that got carried forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Accumulation of monies left over from prior years carried forward.
Okay, gotcha.
Accumulation of budget money.
Right. Okay. Board member comments, questions?
Donna, could you put the general fund balance in some context, like what, what was it running last year? Is this higher or lower?
We lowered it by applying one million.
Right.
It was higher than we lowered it, so, so here we are at about twelve percent, I believe.
Okay.
Of our budgeted expenditures.
So we are on target for how we planned our budget. It just looks a little surprising because it was over three million last year.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Erica, before I move on from budget update, is there anything else you want to add to the general conversation, condition of the budget or anything? Donna said she sees nothing alarming, but I wanted to just check with you before we move on.
Nope, I am in agreement with, with Donna. I don't see anything alarming. We're still pretty cautious with our spending.
Okay, thank you. Old Business Item Two, Updates from Board Representatives. Christina, do you have anything new since last week to add?
Uh, no, I know Erica had just forwarded a letter from the town attorney, and this is about ARPA, sorry.
Yes.
Report on ARPA and C I P. So I'll, I guess I'll be sharing that with everyone. I know Mike and Donna were also asking the auditing firm. And I don't know if you've heard anything back. I, I haven't heard anything if you did. No.
I don't, oh, go ahead, Christina.
So I think that in a few days, we'll have some update on that. In the meantime, there's been a lot of progress made on the form that people will need to use to submit their requests and just need to figure out how to distribute it and, and get it out so that people can start making their submissions. And then, you know, when the ARPA Commission meets again, which is on the twenty-eighth, they still haven't, we don't really know exactly how we're going to determine who, how the funds are spent, but the first step was just understanding what the partial, at least part of what the request will be. So and in the meantime, thinking about what the process is going to be in terms of waiting things and determining what's an emergency versus what isn't, and that sort of stuff, so I guess stay tuned on that. And C I P, the plan was approved to be sent to the selectmen on Tuesday night, and so it is now in the selectmen's hands. I know, I think next week is the meeting with the selectmen to go through the plan, and then from there it will be a part of the, the budget that the selectmen submit back to the Board of Finance, so a lot of us are on that committee as well, so there shouldn't be too many surprises there. And I think that's it. Does anybody have any questions about either of those?
I'm just a question about the, the further opinion from the, the town attorney. I don't, I don't see it anywhere in my email. Is it shared?
I just saw it like twenty minutes ago. When I logged into my computer on this app later this afternoon, so I hadn't forwarded it on to anybody. I haven't even really been, so.
And Donna, have you heard back from Mahoney Sable yet?
I have not.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Christina on ARPA or C I P? All right, let's move on to School Building Committee update. I was unable to attend, to attend the School Building Committee meeting last night. I will say the land subcommittee, which I chair of the School Building Committee, had a meeting recently with the consultant in attendance. The consultant is ready to jump in to help expedite and make more efficient the land assessment process. We had put a lot of effort into making a matrix, wanting to do good due diligence, and he said, well, that's great, you can use it later, but to be honest, I have one already that we've used on multiple school systems. It's a proven formula. It works for the state. Why don't you let me dig in and make your process a little more efficient? So the subcommittee agreed to do that, and he has been connected with Mike Damato so that he can get access to the land records that he needs to, like lot sizes and ownership and things like that. So he's going to speed up that land assessment process. I'm guessing there's somebody here, maybe Erica, who attended the School Building Committee last night and could give us an update on that?
Sure, Mike. Um, there were two things that were really talked about. One was, we had a member of the committee present a viewpoint of what could possibly be done utilizing Hall School in a different configuration there, so there was a discussion from that that led into our first real discussion with our O P M. The, the arching overall picture looks like a timeline will be presented to us at our next meeting, which is the first Wednesday in March, that would show potential application next June, June of two thousand and twenty-three. This June would be too soon, in his opinion, and I would agree with that. So the application for a grant of a project next June with a potential referendum for funding in the fall of sometime, so we haven't seen any more concrete dates. We expect to see that at our next meeting. So there was no action taken, just some, you know, beginning discussions.
Any questions from board members on the School Building Committee update? Christina?
Um, so when you said the fall would be a potential referendum, you mean fall of twenty-three or fall this fall?
Fall of twenty-two, so you'd need the, the funding before the grant application process, so a commitment from the town to fund. So the application is only once a year in June, unlike the other applications which are rolling, applications within the first ten days of the month. These grants are, are once a year by June thirty, so his recommendation is that we should be able to get an application in by June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. And that potentially the referendum could come in the fall. He didn't say early fall, like September or late, you know, November. He didn't give us any specifics on that. Yeah, and that gives an opportunity to narrow down it, because right now we don't have a project. Some committees, by the time they get to this process, have a project. They know they're looking renovate, or they know they're looking to build new. We don't have that narrowed down. We're looking down two paths currently, so it gives us opportunity to do that and to make sure that there's public participation.
Okay, now, I was just wondering in terms of the C I P plan and where we put that, so that sounds like we made a good guess and that we're, that would still hold true, at least with that.
I, I believe so, and I, as we see a more concrete timeline that he presents to us, I certainly have questions about if a referendum happens in the fall and it passes, or whatever that project is, what would be the next steps and would there be money needed between the referendum and the grant application and what that would look like, so I assume at your next regular meeting, Mike, we'll probably have some updates with some more concrete answers.
Thank you.
Stephanie, any other question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, Erica, could you like touch on the high points of what the Hall School scenarios were?
Well, so it was just one. It was a, a member presented a, a plan that was separating the original portion of Hall School and, and making it completely separate from the school facility, not, no determining use, whether it be town use, some other kind of school use, and then potentially putting an addition on, but these were, you know, his concept ideas, but, you know, something for us to discuss with the O P M, certainly look potentially forward to in discussions with the state as to what kind of project they would support and what kind of specifics we would need. So again, it was a real, you know, overview, but it gave us an idea of, of what somebody's thinking, how that could be used.
Thank you.
And that, you're welcome. That meeting is online on our YouTube channel, so if anyone would like to go and watch it, I encourage you to do that.
Okay, anything else for School Building Committee? All right, Town Contract Negotiations. Is there anything left that we are able to comment on, Peter?
Nothing yet. We're still, as far as I know, still waiting for the attorneys to send the final draft for confirmation, ratification.
So Peter, what I'll share with you, as I spoke with our attorney this afternoon, we're waiting for response back from the union representation. And, and when I say union, I mean outside of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm shocked that they're slow, shocked.
Yeah, I'm shocked to have to report it again, but we're, we're once again waiting for a response from them, so everyone is pretty ready to move forward with this.
Okay, any questions on the Town Contract Negotiations? Okay. Item three, ARPA process for allocation and appropriation. I think Christina already touched on that. There's new information from the town attorney that she just got, so we don't have a chance to digest that yet, and based on our last meeting, I sent a letter to Donna asking, well, an email really, to Donna, asking her to contact the town's auditor and ask if they do have, if they feel that they have the proper qualifications or interest to be commenting on the process, since they would potentially audit that process later. And we are waiting to hear back from them, so at this point, it'll, it'll just hang on a little longer. Any questions on that? All right. Moving on to New Business Budget Discussions for Elected Officials, Commissions, and Boards. And I will Kelsey, are you in a position to bring each of these that were distributed up, or would you like me to do it?
Um, I can do it.
Okay, so we'll start with Department zero one twenty-one probate, and my understanding is we don't have information from them yet because the budget for probate is not complete in Tallent. Or the, actually, the town of Tallent budget, I think, is not complete enough. Regardless, we don't know what our share will be. Correct, Donna?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we are going to see this later. Next is zero one twenty-six registrars. And Kelsey, I think you have that one, right? Do we have anyone from the registrars who wants to comment or present or overview the budget request?
You have our requests there, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Coming up now. There we go.
Yep. I would just, I would like to note that Erica mentioned the possible School Building Committee referendum that is not included in this budget. And that's one of the types of things that we always refer to in the last paragraph or so of our presentation of saying that we haven't budgeted for anything unplanned, and we may have to come back to you for more money. So just wanted to note that we did budget for and are planning on referendum for the school Region Nineteen School reapportionment Committee. And if anybody has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Kelsey, can you go to the third page, please, on that? Okay. So I think what we're seeing is a nine point three percent increase. Is that what I saw? It's just out of view on the top of the page here. Is that nine point three or?
Yes.
Okay. And that is made up of, it looks like mostly salary because of minimum wage increases. Is that true?
Yeah, the minimum wage increases are kind of hit us hard this year. We endeavor to make, to pay our election officials just a little bit above minimum wage. So we had to raise everybody up.
There we go, thank you.
Because of that, and what also plays into the elected officials is the number of events that we have to budget for.
Right.
So, and, you know, we're budgeting for a dual primary, an election and two referendums, so it adds up.
Right, so what's showing here as basically a forty percent increase in election officials is not a forty percent increase in salary or dollars per hour. It's a combination of the minimum wage increases and the amount of hours you anticipate working.
Correct.
Okay. And the same thing with the jump of a thousand, eleven hundred dollars in election expenses. That's because you anticipate more events.
Well, we, we're budgeting per event, which is kind of how, it's sort of an odd approach to the budget versus some of the other departments, but we have also had some increases from some of our vendors that play into the election expenses. The company that maintains the tabulators has increased the service contract. We're anticipating a rise in costs for printing ballots as well. And we've heard from the vendor that we use for that, so we tried to just factor in those costs. So it's kind of a combination of things. More, more events equals more costs, but also there's rising costs involved.
Understood. Other board members, questions? Yep.
I, I just noticed, oh, go ahead.
I, I, from the beginning of this conversation, it was said that the, the referendum isn't, isn't in here in plus or minus two thousand dollars. How much does a referendum cost us?
Um, it typically, I would say around twelve hundred, thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you. That, that's very reasonable. Thank you.
Depending on how much interest there is in it, how we staff it, you know.
Okay. Great, thank you for that. Stephanie, you had a question?
Oh, just that you, you, Suzanne, you guys noted that, that the registrar pay could be affected by the negotiation. I think that was in the notes, right? So I just wanted to highlight that, that, that that's part of this budget. Thank you for noting that.
Anybody else for the registrars? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to Department zero one three one, Board of Finance. Donna, do you have that handy?
Yes. So I'm on standby for screen sharing, and then I can share it.
I had, I had set, because Kelsey was sharing.
Okay. I have it now. Thank you.
I didn't do anything, but you're welcome.
Oh.
So so apparently we're reducing our budget by thirty-one percent. Actually, the, the budget, I did not do anything with this budget yet. I figured since we, this is our budget, we should just do it here. So here it is. And I know the last year, the only thing we did differently was well, let's see, where is it in here? I thought, I think we had added
miscellaneous expenses.
Yeah, I think, I think we had added a thousand dollars in there. And that was to, if we potentially needed some hours of the town attorney. In this case, it's possible we could use some of that with Mahoney Sable if they said that they could comment on this ARPA issue, but they would need a task letter for a couple of hours or whatever. We don't, we don't know how that's going to resolve yet, so twelve hundred dollars certainly doesn't buy us much, but it might be the difference. You know, of not having to go to the selectmen asking for money out of their budget to get a legal opinion, Pete?
Uh, yeah, I, I, in, in past years, I've, I think it's been helpful if we kind of hold off on, on our budget till finalizing it till close to the end. I remember the year we had the teacher retirement benefits. It would have been far better for us to put that in, in this budget so that we didn't screw up the Board of Ed budget. And I, I think this is where we can put like that twelve hundred dollars for the referendum. In case it's needed, we can move it over. I, I'm not sure if that's the proper thing to do, or put it, the twelve hundred into the registrar's budget now, but it, if, if we give ourselves some time, I think that might be helpful to see what the rest of the budget looks like.
That's certainly fine. I think we can have discussion tonight. We're not approving any of the submitted budgets at this time anyway, so I guess other board members, do you have any comments or thoughts on our budget?
I like the idea about, of, of a small line like that for the potential of needing expertise or, you know, outside opinion. I don't think, I think that's, that's a Uh, that's a. It's a, it's a good. It's a good possibility that things will come up, particularly we're dealing with things like, you know, the pandemic and. Funding sources that we haven't dealt with before.
Right. Any other comments? I'm happy to just leave it the way Donna has it entered, which is flat right now. At zero, I'm happy to just leave it there for now and we can discuss later on in the process.
Yeah, I agree. Who made did Donna make that change? Or who made that change, Mike?
Uh, well, Donna just updated it right now while we were talking.
Yeah, I I saw that. I thought that was you manipulating that.
No, that she's doing screen share, so I wouldn't be able to manipulate that. Okay, so let's uh, move on to zero one three two treasurer. We do not have that yet. Um, unless you've received it in the meantime, Donna, and I don't believe you have, right?
I I have not.
All right. Board of assessment appeals. What I saw, I didn't actually see a budget from them. I think there was just a letter saying that they didn't anticipate any change. Is that what it was, Donna?
Yes, that's their tradition, just to send a letter that they are not requesting any changes.
Okay, um. They're at zero percent is what you're telling us. Zero percent change.
Well, as the song goes, how long has this been going on?
Um, Donna, do you know what their budget actually is?
Uh, yeah, um, yes, yes. Yes, they have um. Supplies a hundred and twenty six dollars. They have a clerk. It's a few dollars. They have salaries that they split amongst. The three members who are on the Board of Assessment Appeals. And so the salary line and the clerk line. I usually increase that with all of the other salary increases. It's just a matter of a couple of dollars. So I can tell you what their total budget is. I just don't have it memorized. I have to just look it up quick.
We don't actually expect you to have it memorized. That would be cool, but we don't expect that.
Yeah, good. Okay, so their budget is one thousand three hundred forty six dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you, Donna. Any board comments or thoughts on that budget? Okay, let's move on to department one zero one six one conservation commission. And Kelsey, I think you have a budget for that, right? We should get background like Jeopardy music. I hear someone coming. Okay. There you have it. Conservation Commission is requesting fifteen hundred, which is a zero percent change over the current fiscal year. And uh, you can see the breakdown right on the page there, what it's what it's for. All right, any questions? Comments from the board? All right, thank.
Yeah, Mike.
Go ahead.
I. Is this where that money went for the uh? Open space on Mason Road to this board? Was that the conservation commission?
It it didn't go through this budget.
Yeah, but it.
That was their project, but it didn't go through this budget.
Okay. But what did it go through last year's budget?
No, I don't think it shows in this budget because this is more of their operating budget. The money just says was a capital process.
Oh, thank you.
So right people, right pair of pants, wrong pocket. Okay, um, thank you, Kelsey. Um, Mike D'Amato is on another, I think still on another meeting with another. Uh, organization that he was committed to. He was hoping that he would get off that meeting in time to jump on with us. So let's um. I I'm not sure if he does all of these last four. It does he do economic development also?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, he does. Okay, so so we're at his budgets. Um, all right, so we'll start with the overview here. I'm just refreshing myself after reading over this before. The only uh, the only one here with a significant, a little bit of a significant increase is the economic development. And I think um. We can look. All right. So there we go. Thank you. I just can ask for that. So this is the first example you're seeing of the testing out this year. So props to Mike D'Amato for trying out our form. And uh. What he um. Is uh, what he's outlining here is um, continuing to use um. Basically consulting contract services. Erica, have you been involved in any of this? Is anything you want to comment on?
Um, I I certainly not prepared to comment on the increase they're asking for now.
I just didn't know if you, yeah, if you had any background you cared to share on what's going on with the economic.
Right now, I I right, I know that they're, you know, working on um, the South Wellington Village. Um, and and those regulations and and really pumping up that area. The um, lots of grant we have that the town received um, is really going to help um, vitalize that area. That's the sidewalk project from Hall School to the mills. And this plays into that really trying to work on um, additional signage. I'm promoting the town. So you've seen the new signs in um. Mansfield.
Yeah.
Um, and so they're they're working on something um, in that end, and they work with Mike D'Amato in his. Um, not town role. It is town role, but but uh, you know, they contract um, his services for some of the work they're doing there. And so they've got a lot going on. I've got a lot of irons in the fire, working on a lot of potential new development uh, in Wellington. Um, and this these dollars, even though there there is an increase, um, I I believe will really um. Greatly benefit the town, our potential grandlets grow, etc.
And just for clarity, since it's on this forum, the Desi Auto Property and the FNF Concrete thing, uh, if I understood right. Is that the piece that's kind of down over the hill opposite Hilltop Restaurant? Or uh, down in the valley there along the road tracks? Or is that a different parcel?
I I think so, Mike, but I'm not a hundred percent sure which piece they're talking about here.
Okay.
I don't want to misquote.
Right, right. Okay, um. Can you scroll down the screen a little, Kelsey? Yep, keep going. Okay. All right, and then roll on down a little further. Keep going.
So it's cash planning new this year or is it what that is that just repeating it? I mean, do. Continuing that that relationship.
This will be continuing that relationship.
Right, because it's not an increase of twenty three thousand dollars. If that that's the total of this. Um, I think the increase was thirty seven fifty. Okay, um, thank you for the screen share on that, Kelsey. Um, what else do you have? Uh, did he send any other backup on PZC ZBA or inland wetlands? I'm trying to move on my screens here to get back and forth.
Like that cover letter, it um, spoke of all four of those and then he sent the individual. Um, spreadsheet.
All right, this might be. Okay. There we go. That was the one I was looking for. Thank you. Uh, Mike Tomato, if you have joined us, um, feel free to unmute and call out. Let us know you're here.
Yeah, just give me one second. I can get my camera on.
Sure. You have good timing. We had almost run out of things to say about your budget requests. Okay, so for those of you who are looking at the screen for the board members, in the meantime, you can see the four different. Departments here, all on the spreadsheet in the format we're accustomed to.
So that increase is pretty much on uh, on economic development.
Right, online nineteen.
Yeah, that that's pretty much the signs and uh, the extra design work, some of that. That's not really is is isn't, I mean, the the um. The nineteen thousand two hundred and eighty. Is, you know, is uh, is just carryover. I mean, it's the same. The kind.
It's an increase, it's an increase in the budget, but an existing program.
Right.
Yep. Hi, Mike.
Hey, guys. Sorry about that.
That's all right. We've just been over the materials in general. Uh, one question I will ask, just because I asked Erica and she didn't want to misspeak, so um, she deferred. Uh, in the uh, form that you filled out for us, you commented on the rail project and the Desi Auto Property. Is that the property that's over the hill off of Route thirty two, like across from Hilltop? Or um, where is that?
Yeah, so um, the you're referring to what was on the the new spending form?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that um. I guess if you like it, you can tell me that I wrote it, but if you don't, I'll tell you that actually uh, the chair wrote it. Um, so I don't want to, you know, misspeak on his behalf, but yes, there. That parcel is um, the existing gravel operation along the highway or the rail line on Route thirty two.
Yeah. So that's so that's a, I think, a positive sign. The reason I wanted to call it out is um. That. I think his point of putting it in there and the point we should be considering is that. Um, this shows the value of working on these things. This is a progress point, a piece of property that is getting a new lease on life. So do you want to go over um, do you want to go over things again a little bit and just kind of give us some highlights or uh?
Sure.
Really, you want to call out?
Yes, I mean, it hopefully pretty straightforward. Um, and I did attach a a quick memo, really. The the nuts and bolts, the EDC, that was prepared um, by, you know, the chair and and the commission. The uh, two hundred and fifty dollar increase that you're seeing for ZBA is related to the fact that the state passed um. A law which now requires planning zoning and ZBA members to obtain. Training credits every year starting in twenty twenty three. So the second half of this fiscal year, I will have that obligation for those commissions. In looking at the budget, I think I can um, deal with um, planning and zoning based on what we have. Particularly because I I know there's going to be some trainings that will work there and will be free. So I added the increase to ZBA only because that is obviously um. A much smaller budget, uh, budgeting about a hundred bucks per member per year. Um, and then the eighteen hundred dollar increase. Is related to the fact that we went to a cloud-based document management system. So if for any of you that have used our town's online GIS, you'll see that all of our property records are tied directly to the GIS. You can go online, click on a property. View the documents that we have in our files without having to submit an ROI request, come in and ask for copies. And the server that that was on, which was on premises in Town Hall. It basically died and to um, replace that and then host it moving forward. Was going to cost in upwards of three thousand dollars and then an increase. In management on the IT side per year. So this was a um, much cheaper solution and requires no. No oversight on the town. Um, it's managed offsite.
Okay. Uh, board member questions, comments for Mr. Tomato? Just so you know, Mike, we did look at that memo too at the first. That was the beginning of uh. What we looked at for your stuff.
Okay, and I apologize for being tardy to the meeting, tardy with the memo. I'm I'm over two. I apologize for that.
No, there's some people who haven't submitted yet, so you are not.
And hey, it all makes sense, Mike, so.
My my cut, could I just, just to point out, um, the there are three union um, employees within these budgets. The zoning agent assistant, planning and zoning secretary, and ZBA clerk. And so those um, would be adjusted to match the CBA once that's done. Um, to to protect the negotiation process. Those numbers just haven't been shared.
Sure. Okay, anybody else before we uh, move on? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, um, that does it for um. The budget presentations for those. Um, unless else has any more discussion or comment on those. Uh, budgets that we viewed tonight, um, we'll move on. Okay, so correspondence, um, the only thing left for me to send you is. Uh, the, for example, the email that I sent to Donna about the ARPA thing, which I will forward to all of you and um. The uh, there were some questions that some members had sent me to um, ask. Um, Chief Moore from Wellington One, and I sent him an email asking those questions um, following up, so um. That is it for course, what?
Uh, speaking of correspondence, I may have missed the correspondence. Did we get that uh, job? Outline for our recording secretary position?
I got it from Erica a while back and um, I guess board members can tell me by nodding or shaking their heads if I sent it out to you or not. I'm guessing bases, you didn't get it from me?
No, I didn't. Well, I may have. I just didn't. I I never saw it. I I I occasionally miss stuff. That's why I'm asking.
All right, I will go back and I will make sure that I made a note to add that to my correspondence too.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Um, okay. Speak. Is anyone who would like to speak? Unmute, call out your name or wave your hand. All right, seeing none. Um, good and welfare. I like the direction things are going on public health. Let's hope it keeps going that way. Um, maybe we'll. Consider meetings in person again someday. Although now I'm really getting used to this. Anything else for the good of the order? Go ahead, Pete.
Move to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all those favor in favor, say aye and waves.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Bye, Mike.